Okay.
I call the meeting to order at five thirty.
Make a motion, we approve the regular meeting minutes of April nineteenth. Aye. Make a motion, we approve non-public meeting minutes one, two, three, and four of April nineteenth.
Second that. You share the discussion. You're in favor.
Aye. I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that. You share the discussion. You're in favor.
Aye.
I'll go again. Josh, is anybody on that? I don't know the appointments. Bruce, you're on.
Good evening. We're, uh, I'm part of the, uh, Antiradio Club that's based here in Swansea. And with me tonight, I've got the president of our Antiradio Club, Ron Ossom. And, uh, we're looking for a home for our storage trailer. And I'll let Ron make the, do the talking a little bit, and I have some pictures after to see where. Well, sorry.
Similar to what you have at, at the, uh, at your refuge place right now. Uh, you have four of them, and I think I'm, we're gonna try to match them with. This will allow us to put all our equipment in there. Uh, which here right now is scattered all over Swansea, Ridge, Marlboro. Uh, and that equipment we use also, we, we use it for emergency and all that. And I passed out some stuff for the town administrator there. So we would just, we need permission and approval for you to approve us bringing it in there and placing it there so we could use that for our storage. If that's okay.
So the, the place I'm looking to put this is open in the recycling center on Prime Street. And I have some pictures of, uh, and I have, uh, the, uh, garage. They're also, and, uh, Josh says there wouldn't be any problem, uh, putting it over there. So this, we, we pass them on. But I got picture number one, would be, if you're familiar with the roll offs are over as you go in beyond the, the area there. You've got the roll off aid for that destruction stuff and the moving materials. Then you've got roll off area. So we're gonna, you take one back to that. So this, uh, third, uh, picture is where the site actually is, but we're looking back toward the Prime Street. And you can just see the tip of the building, the recycling building. And then you're coming up, we're up walking up toward the building, we're up, uh, the fire pits are off to the side over there, and then you get the building, yeah. Inside. And then this is, uh, this is one of the very similar things, the, uh, storage containers that are currently now. Uh, you won't be able to see these, uh, this box is a twenty foot long, like eight and a half wide. And, uh, Josh has said, you know, the, uh, high numbers, the things put it on, set it on how it's supposed to sit on ground. So we used to just be able to, uh, so this is the box, uh, okay. And we worked it out with Josh as far as, uh, the time we had to do it was to close here in the Prime Street. The recycling center is open before we're having to get out. Well, the recycling center is not closed. It is closed, I'm sorry. Some of them are. And we have a label so that contact information for emergency purposes. We'll contact you there.
No hazardous stuff.
No, no hazardous stuff. No. All amateur radio equipment.
Well, well out of the way of anything that where Josh was really using.
Right, he was very nice.
Make a motion. Make a motion.
Seconded by. Uh, you share the discussion.
Okay, thank you. We'll keep you posted, uh, when we actually purchase the item and when we're gonna move it in there. We'd like to know when that.
Did Joe tell you he's looking for one also?
I'm sorry?
Did Joe tell you he's looking for one also?
No, but we can give you that certain information.
Yeah. Something about the, uh, uh, your.
I'll, I'll just go in there.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Chris just told, where did you get that?
Yep, so that's a agreement between the town and the state for the fully federally funded, uh, bridge project. So basically just an agreement that outlines, uh, the terms of the project. So pretty, pretty boilerplate stuff. So I'd be looking for the board to authorize me to sign that agreement.
Make that motion.
Seconded.
Aye. I'll data.
That's what I heard. Thank you. So we're coming up on, uh, on a year that Alice has been operating up at the, the Carpenter Home. She's now a registered, uh, nonprofit. And we're looking to extend that for an additional year. When we had agreed to the original one-year lease, we had outlined kind of prospective rent for this coming time period. So it was an easy discussion. Those, those fees still work for her. They continue to get us closer to her covering more of the expenses. Reviewed her preliminary budget. Definitely tight, but she's got more opportunities to do more fundraising. So that would help build a little more buffer if she's able to do that. I know she's gotten a lot of the, a lot of the space approved for use. The next step is just getting the staffing and kind of operationally getting there. But she has more room to expand and add more, add more children, which obviously will bring in more revenue. So I think it's overall going well, definitely, uh, definitely a needed, needed thing in the area. So I'd be looking for the board to authorize an additional one-year lease through next year.
I'll make that motion. Aye.
That was what I could come up with, uh, for filler until our public, uh, public hearing.
Alex is here, could have filled it.
Definitely could have filled it, yeah. But I, uh, what I could think of. Uh, Richson Park Bathhouse, Julius and I drove by there, that's all. The foundation's been poured and the framing's, uh, been doing, being happening, been happening this week. So it's worth, uh, worth a drive-by to see it's really, really shaping up so you can really get a sense of Alex, uh, Alex and the look over there. So they're making good progress. Um, they're hoping to still be on schedule, finish by around Memorial Day. So that's gonna be, uh, the kids that came from the staff are really excited about that. I'm sure the other users of the, uh, the beach are are gonna look forward to it as well. I, along with a couple of the departments, participated in the Manadmoog, uh, High School Job Fair, Career Fair, uh, last week. So that was a, it was a good experience. Meeting with some of the kids. And we definitely mentioned that when we're talking about, you know, local, local government jobs and projects that, that they can kind of envision. A lot of them are familiar with the, with the beach. So, uh, it was a good project to discuss and to show kind of what we do beyond just pushing paperwork and, uh, that sort of stuff. They're gonna be busy in Swansea because they're doing the recycling center and then they're, or they're doing Richson Park, and they're not gonna do the recycling center. So they're gonna be busy in Swansea this year. We got that, uh, notice of award out, we're just finalizing the schedule for the transfer station improvements. But that is gonna be happening this fall. Yes. Yeah, it's gonna be the same construction company, TCD, that's doing the restrooms at Richson Park. Working on it. Uh, Upper Wilson Pond Dam, that's close to finalizing the design. Gotta get permitting, uh, approved by that stage, but that's hoping to go out to the, uh, later this summer probably.
Or next year.
No, I think they're hoping to do it this year.
Well, we could take a little recess until six if you want.
Probably a good idea. I don't, that was only two minutes that I was in for the bio, so I don't think I got to anymore.
I'll make the motion to recess until six o'clock for the public hearing. Aye.
All right, Ken, you know, work, work the room.
Yeah, work the.
Work, work the room.
We're gonna take, uh, twenty minutes for it. Either way.
Or mute it.
You can mute it.
That way if people log in, they'll still see us.
Recording in progress.
I guess we have all here for the public hearing. We're going to get into unanticipated funds. But we might get through that first, and then we'll go on to the power.
Is your mic on? You need a mic.
Let's try this one.
Okay. Testing, testing, is that better?
A little bit closer. Seriously, a little bit closer.
All right, now, is it better or worse? Okay. We're gonna have a public hearing.
You gotta be right up on it.
Are we ready?
Yeah.
All right. So we're gonna commence the public hearing for expenditure of unanticipated funds, total from the state of New Hampshire, $20,000, under the recreational trails program for rail trail improvements. We're gonna open the public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak to that? Okay, then we're gonna close the public hearing.
What are we talking about?
We're talking about the rail trail monies that have been come in from the state of New Hampshire to the tune of $20,000.
In order to accept funds from the state or anybody else--
Let him do the talking, he's the only one we can hear.
I think you can hear me. In order to accept funds from the state or anybody else, we have to have a public hearing on it. So that's--we have to have them at 6:00. So we're gonna do this now, it's very quick, and then we're gonna go into the community power portion of it, okay? You closed it?
I've closed it.
I move to accept and expend unanticipated funds in the amount of $20,000 from the state of New Hampshire under the recreation trails program for rail trail improvements.
I'll second that. Further discussion, hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Mike.
Now we'll get to the community power, which I think is why most of you are probably here. It's great to see a great turnout. I just wanted to give a little bit of brief introduction to this subject, which is really two years in the making. The select board and our former planning director, Matthew Bachler, approached this once the legislation was changed to allow community power, and that was back in March of 2021. We had an advisory committee, Community Power Committee, which had Barbara Scully, Bob Badet, Sherry Domina, Dan Leclair, and Bob Wyman on it. I see several of them here today, so thank them for their service. And they worked over the course of 2021 to develop a plan. They held two public hearings in November and December of 2021, and then the voters approved the plan at town meeting in 2022. Over the last year, we've been waiting primarily for Public Utility Commission approval of the plan, which came in December of 2022. And then most recently, our land use and zoning coordinator, who's been doing some chair setup in the room as well, Julius Peel, worked with the Energy Commission and our consultants, Standard Power, Bob Hayden, and Emily Mans, who are here. And Emily's gonna be giving the presentation tonight. So obviously, you're all here, you've received the notices regarding community power. Emily's going to give you an overview of the program and answer any questions you have. As you notice, the acoustics in this room can be challenging, so please try to limit any side discussion. If you do have any questions or comments, please come up. We'll put the microphone back at the stand and just ask you to identify yourself for our minute taker. So with that, I'll turn it over to Emily Mans from Standard Power, who's gonna give a brief overview and then answer any questions or comments you might have.
Hello. Okay. So I'll just get used to this mic here and not blast your ears, but make it so that you can hear me as well. So, thank you, Michael. My name is Emily Mans, I work for Standard Power. We've been working with the town of Swansea on community power for several months and really happy to be here tonight to explain the program to you. And my goal, of course, is that you leave tonight understanding the program and your options within it. So I'll be presenting, but our--my--the president of our company is also here, Bob Hayden, and he's hiding in the back at the moment, but when we're done the formal presentation, he'll come up and answer questions for you. So the purpose of community power programs is pretty much the same nationwide. Everyone wants savings, so it provides cost savings, and that's the most endurable reason why these programs are popular and growing around the country, and were started in New Hampshire. There's also a lot of volunteer energy that goes into bringing these programs to communities because they can have renewable energy benefits, they can bring more renewable energy to our communities, and that's true also in Swansea. So early in the process, we did a survey. We just put it out there widely, just to see whether the Swansea community supported the renewable energy goal as well as the cost-saving goal for community power, and we found a very strong support here. So your program today and the plan includes renewable energy as well as cost savings. Community Power bundles small customers together for buying power and for consumer protections. So we take, you know, customers within a community and bundle you together, but you can also bundle communities together. And so Keene, Swansea, Marlborough, and Wilton had the same program timing, and so we bundled together for the purchase of the power for the rates that I'll show you, that you've seen in your letter, and I'll show you in a few minutes. So Swansea and the group chose Direct Energy as our electricity supplier. I have a slide later about--with a bit of a bio about Direct Energy, but we're very pleased to partner with Direct Energy. They have experience both with municipal aggregation programs like this and also with residential customers in New Hampshire. And they provide all of the energy, the electricity for the program, as well as procure the renewable energy. So there are two types of customers, or the program divides the community into two types of customers. There are eligible customers. These are eligible for automatic enrollment in the program. So these customers will be enrolled in the program unless you take action. All of these customers are currently on Eversource utility default supply. All the other customers in town are on competitive supply. There's no such thing as being unserved, so you're either a default customer or you are on competitive supply. If you are eligible for automatic enrollment, you received an opt-out letter, and as I said, you'll be automatically enrolled unless you take action. And then the--and then other customers. If you're on competitive supply now, you will not be automatically enrolled in the program, but you can join it, and we just suggest that you look at your current contract for--in case you have early termination fees, you just don't wanna pay an early termination fee in order to join the program. So one of the reasons people sometimes think that they're going to opt out is that maybe there's an effect on the utility, but your existing utility services stay the same. Eversource is not against these programs. Eversource is on record supporting programs that reduce costs for customers, like community power. We work with--Eversource is a partner with community power, they're not against your program, and all transmission and distribution, emergency services, billing, all stays with the utility, it all stays exactly the same. Same crews come to your street if you have a power outage. In addition, customers that are on electric assistance or on budget billing, those programs are calculated separately from community power. They keep their benefit, and they benefit from the lower program rates in the program. So this is an image of a generic electric bill on the front side, and I just wanted to show you that, and make the point, your bill will look exactly the same as it does now, it's just one bill. The yellow highlighting I added, your bill doesn't have yellow highlighting on it, but that's where--there's three places on your bill that will show where the program is effective. On the supply line, I'm not sure if you can see that, but the supply is about half your bill, so in the program, when it's--this program's saving almost nine cents a kilowatt-hour for your--it's almost a quarter of your bill. So if your bill is $200, this program in the first month will save you about $50. It's a big savings. The yellow on the bottom corner, it says your electric supplier is. So if that says Eversource now, then you will be automatically enrolled in the program unless you opt out. But once you become a participant in the program, that will say Swansea Community Power, and that's how you'll know you're in the program. This is the other side of the electric bill, and here it will also say your supplier is in the first of the highlighted lines, so that would change to Swansea Community Power. And then I just wanted to make the point that your supply charges are calculated by multiplying your use times a rate, and I'm gonna show you the program rates and the Eversource rates. So the column on the left that says Eversource default service, if you're an Eversource customer, you're currently paying 20.22 cents per kilowatt-hour for supply only. And that's a rate, it includes 23.4% renewable energy, that's the state minimum, that's all the power used in the state has a minimum renewable energy, and it's 23.4% this year. And that rate changes every six months, it goes up and down, probably some of you know how it's been going, up and down quite extreme. If you are an eligible customer, you would be automatically enrolled in the rate that has the blue box around it, 11.47 cents. So your rate would go automatically from 20--over 20 cents down to 11.47 cents. That includes additional renewable energy, it has 33.4% renewable energy in it, and it is good for 30 months. So really important point in this program is that the rates will stay the same for 30 months, that's till December of 2025. Customers, as customers, you can come and go from the rate, but this rate will just stay there, it doesn't matter what your neighbors do, it doesn't matter what other towns do, that rate is there for you, for till the last customer is in the program, that rate is the rate for the program. And then there are optional products as well in the program, so if you wanted the best rate we could get with no renewable, no extra renewable energy, there's the basic rate at 11.1 cent per kilowatt-hour, that's the Swansea basic. And then there's, if you want more renewable energy, there's 50 and 100% renewable energy, but I'll just point out that even the 100% renewable energy product at 13.9 cents is still six cents below the current utility default rate. So these rates are good for 30 months, the utility rate will change and go up and down. And so, and that's the point I make, these are stable and competitive rates, they're not cheaper. You may know or have a business that purchases power in the competitive market, and you purchase power in order to have stable rates, but we do expect, we do plan these programs to have savings over the program period. All of the renewable energy in the program, all of the additional renewable energy is Class 1 renewable energy credits. This is--renewable energy is actually, the term is decoupled, these are real markets, they're national, it's just like buying power, there are different segments, there are market opportunities, but the point is that the renewable energy in your program is verifiable, it's locationally verifiable, and we--it's new renewable energy principally solar, but can also be additional hydro and some other aspects too. For net metering customers, this has been a little bit of a complicated issue, but I'm gonna simplify it like this. If your system was built before August of 2017 and you get full credits on your bill, then you are safe to automatically enroll in the program. So you'll keep your bank of credits that you've accumulated, you'll continue to accumulate credits, it will work the same way as before. If you have a newer system, then the general recommendation is that you opt out for now because your benefits will be affected by being in the program. It's a technical issue, we don't have a timeline for fixing it, but we are working on fixing that. If you want more nuanced sort of advice, then we encourage you to sign up for our email list, and we'll send out updates and we'll help you with your calculation. So the other, sort of the last reason why people consider opting out of a program is just the sort of opposition to an opt-out program in the first place, and really, the reason this is an opt-out program is that an opt-in program hasn't worked. We've had opt-in competitive supply in New Hampshire for the better part of 20 years, and about 10% of customers take it up, and probably fewer than that take it up successfully. There's a lot of predatory behavior in the competitive market for individual customers. You might have seen introductory rates, and then they go high when you're out of contract. So this, our program is not an introductory rate, as I said, it's good for 30 months, and it just provides that stable competitive rate that no consumers want, and we can't get it without both, we can't get it without bundling you together. So these are the ways you can opt out or opt into the program or change products. If you got an opt-out letter, there was a postcard, you can use the postcard to opt out. If you want to opt in or change products or opt out, you can call the supplier, that's Direct Energy, and the number's there, and it's also on your letter, and it's also on our website at swansea communitypower.com. And the website also has forms for changing products or opting out. So I did say I wanted to give a shout out to our team, this is the team we're working with. So Direct Energy currently has 12 active aggregations in Massachusetts, they work with Eversource already, they work with our partner, Good Energy, already. Bob and I are from Standard Power, we have 70 municipal customers for broker, regular brokerage services and energy services now. Those are municipal customers, oh, and that's towns and school districts. And then we teamed up in 2020 with Good Energy to provide community power services to our municipal customers. So this is my second last slide, this is just to show you some of the outreach we've done for the program in Swansea. We have done press releases, we've had some articles in the Keene Sentinel, the, we've gotten to know your local radio host in WKVK, and then eligible customers received a postcard and a letter, and all other customers received a letter. And if you have questions on your letter, there's some telephone numbers for support to, for support lines. And then the name Swansea Community Power is reserved for your program, so you can be sure that that's where you're going to get the official information for the program. So, and here's some contact numbers, this is the, you know, if you have questions, but you know, Bob and I are here to go ahead and answer your questions now if you have some, so, thank you.
Hi. You've made it clear that Eversource will continue to provide certain services, you made it clear that Direct Energy will be the supplier, but I didn't hear you say, I presume, what? But I didn't hear you say, I presume what your role is. I saw that you said that you're an energy broker, but what if your greatest priority CD, so I know what the company does.
So this is Bob Hayden. He's the president of and chief deputy officer.
Yeah, you tell his analysts or economists that future projects in.
So we work with a wide variety of suppliers. They all have national level analysts who work for them. We look at their pricing on a daily basis. We look at market conditions on a daily basis. So we do spend a lot of time exactly in the market as much as we can. We rely on suppliers for the data that we use to make our judgments and also their conversations associated with that data and what they see as the future of the market. So when we did this purchase with the other towns, we did it knowing that the projections for the market were relatively flat from where they were for that 30-month period. So that's some of the intelligence that went into that purchase.
Do you ever study renewable energy?
That's a great question and I explain it a lot. So the EPA decoupled the electricity and the greenness. They embodied that greenness in a thing called a renewable energy certificate. That certificate is tradable on its own markets. And when it is purchased, the revenue, large portions of the revenue go to future renewable energy projects. So it becomes seed market for the evolution of more renewables on our distribution grids or our New England grid specifically, but across the country, the program works in virtually every state.
If it's only the first 24% of credits, why is there?
Yep. You're getting more of those renewable energy credits retired in the community's name.
And what is that in your credit?
They are in the form of a document called a renewable energy certificate. And that document is retired out of existence in the community's name. So that piece of greenness that used to be associated with some generator in the New England ISO, the New England States, is retired in the town of Swansea's name. Now going forward, as I was talking to Mr. Adet, one of the team members who helped put this plan together, at this time, most RECs that exist or renewable energy certificates that exist are in long-term contracts. So we're working now to be involved in projects locally so that when we do a renewable, renewable of this contract in 30 months, we'll have real projects in the community that we'll enjoy the benefit of the RECs from.
What if you said, said that we are not able to stand?
Yeah. Yeah, that has an extra 10%, so it brings you to 33% renewable.
Because other options are available until 30 months.
Oh, no ma'am. No, not correct. All four options are available to you. There's the do nothing option, which gives you the extra 10%. The choices you have are to opt out, to opt down to no renewable at 11.1 cents and to opt up to 50% or 100% at 13.9 cents.
When I'm doing that, you're just 1 year, that's it? I'm contributing to Swansea with the tax, renewable one.
As I said, at this time, the RECs are regional RECs. So the RECs could be from any project, New England. In the future, we hope to be specific to the community or in general Cheshire County. Way in the back.
I like the idea of all this. My question is, I don't understand the analytics of if I, how it goes after, is it lying down? Something happens and sort of comes and follows. I don't understand. I guess my question, will they be coming quickly or is there more?
Yes, sir. Would you like, would you like a bigger answer? Okay. This is a great conversation because the utility does not get paid for supply. They enjoy no revenue from the power. Their business is to build the lines, fix the lines, service the lines, and when they go down, fix the lines. All the money they spend on that, they enjoy a 10% profit on. So in some ways, it's a monopolistic money machine. It's great! So if you have money to invest in a down market, utilities are always a great investment. They don't like supply. Having to provide supply gives them a lot of bad press. They have to hire extra employees that don't get paid for to answer the questions associated with the high price of electricity that they are required to buy in a three-day window twice a year. Now, in my market as a buyer of electricity, I think there's probably 60 or 70 good days a year to buy electricity. That means if they're got two, three-day windows, they're probably in some of the worst days. And we see that in our rates, that they're often buying on the worst day. You remember that rate a couple of months ago that was 22.556? That was bought on one of the worst days the market ever saw. Yes, next question. Got one over here.
My other question is, let's say we're automatically opt in, like spending six months and now we want to change or move or whatever, and is there cancellation fee or anything? We decide we don't want to get anymore?
So I gotta give an announcement to the crowd. I did not write that question for Mr. 603. I did not write the question. You can come and go in this plan by election and you do that on your meter read date. So if you elect to drop out of the plan, it's on your next meter read date. If you elect to come back in, it's on the next meter read date. So literally what that means, if there's, there's rate anomalies, you can arbitrage the system. I'm an energy broker. I love arbitraging the system. Next question. Oh, is that Mr. Adet? Way in the back.
Well, I can change any of the plans at any time too. I'm not locked into the default or anything.
Right. So I had a wonderful day Saturday. Saturday was a cool day because it was the first opt-up program I did for this program. The city of Keene had a big Earth Day celebration. Did anybody go? Well, we had a, great. Thank you so much for being there. And the, the point of the Keene table was to encourage people because they're at the, on the same time schedule as you, they just got their letters, was to encourage them to opt up to the 100% plan.
Is it possible that those who are eligible to this plan did not get an opt-out letter?
So it is possible. I would say if you didn't get a letter, you might've have a fairly new meter, but if you, if you've had your bill for a while and you're an Eversource supply customer and you didn't get an opt-out letter, you ought to start with somebody at the table here who can take your name for us to follow up with.
I have another answer.
Is it a bunch of more funding people that possibly didn't get any letters? What are appearing?
Yes, so we are aware of the problem and we are discussing it with, with Eversource and we will get you sorted out. One thing to do is to just go ahead and opt in if you want to participate. Let Direct know that, to give them clarity that you are aware that there was an issue, but that you want to participate in the program. And that would be, but we are going to fix it behind the scenes too. Thanks.
Is there some special reason why there is not a matter of source person to anything?
Again, they don't get paid for doing anything to do with supply. They only do what they're paid to do. They're a very, very specific company that works for their shareholders. We think they work for us sometimes and they behave as if they do, as they do great service, but they work for their shareholders. Yes, sir.
Who owns Standard Power?
And another company, Dichotomy Power.
And it's located at?
Nashville.
And how do you make your money?
As a broker, I receive a fee on every kilowatt hour I sell and I administer 30 local hydro plants, including ones all around here. So I make additional revenue on administering local hydro plants in the group net metering program. In addition, I often capture grants for those projects and solar projects.
What's your, um, do you want?
I don't know the answer to that question above my pay grade. We do get audited every year. It's horrible. There's always five more things that I gotta produce, you know, receipts or bills or something. But yes, we get audited, painfully so. If you want more specific question or answer to that, you can email me and you can have my card to do so if you choose. And I'll give you an answer from our, the person I'm training, you might CFO, because I don't like being CFO. I like being here talking to you folks about these great opportunities. Next question. Oh, I got one up in front.
How do you automatically opt in? You don't sign something or anything to fit because I know my neighbor, my district letter, he has no idea, so he has to, that's the opt-out. And so he isn't even ready to think about.
So that's a great question. This law was put into effect by the governor signing HB 315 on August 26, 2020. 14 months later, the committees who actually turned the bills into laws completed their actions. So it's under 53E and it was enabled by HB 315. A little more detail is? So that, those are the laws that enable this. Essentially, opt-in programs where you sign up for something have been available for over 20 years and are often considered quite predatory. So something with a little more control like this will serve clients better and have better consumer protections. Sir?
How do they determine the number of green credits available on the market?
Well, it's somewhat limited in that there's only X amount of generators. So there, there is some, some problems sometimes with availability. And so we've started a program within our company to control some block or RECs so that we have some control over it. That question and the results that can happen as we add community power programs with folks who want to participate in a renewable energy certificate program has come to light in New York State where there's a shortage now.
Do they increase, for the area, the power projects?
The price?
No, the price doesn't increase.
Well, if more projects are built, yes. Every time there's a renewable project built, they create more RECs. Caller?
I think it's one kilowatt hour.
Oh, a REC is one megawatt hour?
Production. So a REC is one megawatt hour production from a renewable energy facility. That's how it's created.
Did you hear that?
That's how they determine how many.
So every renewable energy producer, including rooftop solar panels or offshore wind or solar, you know, installations, they produce renewable energy certificates, one for one megawatt hour of production. So they are, so every renewable energy producer produces both electrons, which are indistinguishable from electrons made by other means, and renewable energy credits. There's two markets. And they're federally regulated and as Bob described, they're retired in your name when you purchase one.
Do they produce the credit for a megawatt hour? So do they get paid for that to me or not?
It's a monetary construct.
They, they get paid for it. We, we pay them. That, that's the point is we, this program will buy, you know, will buy RECs and then pay those.
So the renewable portfolio standard, which is a state law, requires that all electricity sold in the state of New Hampshire has 23.4% renewable energy within it. That is the lowest amount in the New England States. We're all in one grid called the New England ISO. So we have the lowest requirement in the, in the New England States. The additionality, the extra 10% is bought in addition to the cost of the electricity supply that will be serving the community power plan with.
What is the price?
The market. But there's a cap on it. Because it's a federally regulated entity, there is a cap on the price. Sir?
Let's see, is spread, the percentage spread between the bid and the offer?
That's a great question. So on residential, so where there has to be an independent auditor looking at a meter once a month, the spread tends to be over 25%. And then in bigger situations, it drops to 1.5%.
20% is a lot.
It sure is. But many people were so annoyed by the whole system, the cost and the annoyance, that they didn't even register the RECs for their rooftop solar.
So are you carbon credits?
So carbon credits are not part of this discussion, but they are making a comeback in this country. They're just starting to become significant again and we are looking at that forward opportunity by having the intel within our company.
I was wondering, so people have to.
So if, do you net meter? When did you build your project? So if you want to send us your bill, we'll look at it and answer specifically to your situation, but Emily has the best handle on it. If it's net metering one, it's a very good chance that you should be in this program. If it's net metering two, there's a very good chance that you shouldn't be. Again. Follow, excuse me, sir. Follow.
So I believe there's an information sheet at the back, but if you don't mind signing in and just put net metering customer next to your name, then I'll be in touch with you. I've been fielding calls and I can, I can help you puzzle through it. And anybody else who needs the answer?
Yes, that's for everybody. One more. Yes.
How long do solar panels last? And where do they go when they don't work anymore? And are they considered toxic?
So that's largely beyond the scope of this conversation, but solar panels have a predicted lifetime of 25 years at over 90% and they are supposed to degrade after that, but there's little proof. The proof suggests they continue to produce on into the future. Now, is there toxic metals in there? There probably isn't some. I'm not sure of all, but some. I don't know the best disposal ways. That, that need is evolving now because some of the earliest panels that were like 150 KW each are now being replaced on a monetary basis. So there will be some need to recycle those. That would be a good bill to get into the legislature. That would be a good bill to get into the legislature.
So however unlikely, and you can see within a 30-month period in time or a situation where the rate could not be maintained, that you'd have contracted for, for a certain amount of response.
Yeah, there's a minute possibility the supplier goes out of business for some reason. That is possible. It, it has happened in different times. And then you revert back to the utility rate. Is it also possible that the utility rate drops below our rate? Yes, it is. Those are possibilities. We don't guarantee against them. So if that happens, you're welcome to leave the plan at any time to arbitrage rates.
Just add that our, um, we partnered, as I said, with a company called Good Energy. So they have a few years of experience in Massachusetts. And the rates, um, there have been extreme, uh, national grid had a rate of 32 cents a kilowatt hour, I believe. And the program rates held. So program rates between 10 and 12 cents were holding in, and, and have been holding. They haven't had the, the suppliers either reneg on their rates or go out of business, even though they're extremely different than the default rate. So another reason we're happy with them.
If that happens, then the individual chose to opt out because the rate is down, so that individual is unpenable. Is there a source required to take back those and save the energy?
Yes.
So in person, energy, you have your renewables and non-renewables. If a tonics can't get enough of the, uh, renewables, can you tell the non-renewables to increase their production? And is there a penalty if they have to increase their production?
So as I, um, explained before, your electricity is, um, part of the ISO New England grid. So ISO New England is an organization that balances production and energy use. And they can't predict who's going to use what at any given time. But when you flick the light on, your power comes on and that will continue. That's not affected by this program. Um, ISO New England has the nuclear power plants and the solar power plants and they balance all of the production against all of the demand. What we're talking about are the contracts. What we're talking about is what you pay for power. You can, there's a lot of different prices out there at every, at any given moment. Um, if you're on the market that changes every 15 minutes, you can pay anything from a negative price to, you know, a thousand dollars a megawatt hour, the prices. These are contracts and so, um, it, it, it's not affected by what you're saying. Yes, of course, your power will still come on. Um, and we are, are working with contracts for power and contracts for renewable energy certificates. And we buy them in strips ahead. So we're not, we're not balancing that. We're not up at night balancing your energy supply. We, we know well in advance. So we don't do that. That's ISO New England. That's not part of this program. ISO New England does that. And they do it exactly the same way that they do now.
So it's actually generator run only in peak situations. So when, you know, when the demand gets high, there's units that turn on to meet the demand. They're more expensive. There's a thing called the forward capacity market where all of the prices are set for three years into the future or two and a half years or so, uh, into the future. So each generator has its price. Some of them are on all the time because they're the lowest cost. As, as the load across the New England ISO increases, other generators come on that get paid more and more and more.
So when this turns on in June?
Yes.
Is it turned on the day your meter is red?
Yes.
Okay.
Blue cross, red cross, sorry.
Going with ISO is supply the power. Does that come home or any piece of the component, the hydro electric?
Yeah, if you look on the New England ISO website, there's, on your phone, it could be ISO to go is the name of the application. You would see net imports. Net imports is terminology for hydro Quebec.
But if it comes with the grid, if you have their merchant, they decided to?
No, sir. As I, we just explained, that's, that's one of the cheapest powers there is. It's like two cents a kilowatt hour. But there are other peaker plants that get paid to be ready to turn on. So they get paid a small fee called a capacity payment, waiting and hoping not that they turn on. Cause then they get paid more. But they prefer to just take the capacity payment and never turn on.
Mention nuclear power?
There's, there's a couple still, yeah. Vermont Yankee got shut down a couple of years ago. That was another one. Pardon me? Yes, sir. And for the foreseeable future. The last two of that old design are being commissioned right now in Georgia. They should be the last of the Westinghouse 1000s. From 1958. Yeah, 1958. In the back. So it starts on your meter read after June 1st and I'll let Emily talk about the choices.
So we have heard that the, um, letter wasn't entirely clear. So I apologize. We'll do that better next time. Um, but you can, um, call the, the supplier, the 866 number to change products or you can go on the website, swansea communitypower.com. And there's a form on there that you can change products. So we haven't talked about, the generation does not go down. These program rates will stay for 30 months. It doesn't matter if there's one customer left in the program, you can have these rates. These rates don't go down and we buy the power. We were talking about the hypothetical of renewable energy, energy certificates being in short supply, but it's a hypothetical problem that we will see into the future and, and deal with if, if we need to. Your, your program, if you purchase 100% renewable energy in this program, it is guaranteed at that price for 30 months. The supplier takes all of the risk. They take all of the weather risk. The, the energy markets, the global energy markets that are rocked by war. They take the migration risk of customers coming and going from the program. They take all of the risk. You are guaranteed the product you purchase for 30, for 30 months. But, you know, you can come and go.
Hypothetical answer. Hypothetical answer, sorry. Well said. As we talked about earlier, the electric stuff. Oh, I got one way in the back first. It's a reasonable analogy. Yes, sir. Well, if all the power goes out and the grid goes down, we've got bigger problems than what our electrical is. Um, next. Um, so first off, we'll probably negotiate those rates in March or April of that year. And yes, there'll be notifications about what any rate changes are, if there are any. But wait, rates will change. They, they always change. Um, I think you might be first, sir. No, flag? I said the utility buys energy within a three-day window. They bought it on a bad day. They have a three-day window twice a year. So they are legally bound or by rule bound by the PUC to buy electricity in those two three-day windows for a six-month rate. Sir? No, sir. You can come and go as you please. But it's on the meter read date unless you use the website. Sir? That's up in the air. When we chose 30 months, it was because of market conditions and rates. So the four towns, including Swansea, agreed on the term and the, the product at that time. And likewise, when we do future buys, we have another group of seven towns that'll contract later this year. They'll have the option of looking at a variety of options at that time and trying to make a group choice.
So coming up to term, then our group will be able to determine how much we opt in for going forward. So we want to do another 30 months based on the performance of the market. We can do that? Or if we say, we can back that down?
Literally, the plan could, could terminate. That's a possibility. So say we do a really bad job, it could terminate. If we do a great job and continue to maintain a great spread between the utility rate and our rate, then one would assume that we'll continue to do that as we have for eight years with the municipal buildings here. And that's our expectation is that we'll always beat the market because we have the freedom of buying on good days and using the, the term to our advantage on price also. Way in the back. So there seems to be like a benchmark number of about 100 million kilowatt hours, where the value of buying more starts, goes away. So we want to do chunks of 100 million kilowatt hours minimum. Bob, Bob, that in the back. Yes. So we're looking at several solar projects in the area. And so we would hope to negotiate prices and the ownership of the REX so that it's a, it's a positive impact on pricing and that we own the REX so we can retire REX from a project in the community. When we've talked to folks, we feel like there's a lot of community ownership in what people want for their own solar. So that's an opinion based on a lot of conversations, but it is an opinion. And that would be our plan. We also already work with a variety of the hydro facilities in the neighborhood and all over the state. Yes, sir.
So if we do nothing, then we're going to be entering the Swansea standard?
Yes, sir.
And if we want to change, we've got to go to at swansea.com?
Yeah. Or call. There's a phone number too. You can call. No, the standard plan is what you get if you do nothing.
So don't you get 100% energy everyone?
Yes, absolutely. There's two separate things. Energy is always 100%. It's the renewable energy certificates that vary. That's the only thing that varies. You always get all your electricity. But the difference is how much renewable energy certificates are retired in the community's name or by you essentially through the community. Okay, one more time. Let's go back to the original point. The original point is 20, please, hello? 20, yeah, 20 years ago, the EPA, a little over 20 years, decoupled electricity and greenness. They created the renewable energy certificate program. And so that way, there'd be two separate entities so that the renewable energy certificates could you, be used as a financial construct to build future projects. And that's been working great for 20 years across the country. So they're two separate things. You always get all the power you need. Wow, I don't see any hands left. All right. Yes, sir. Yep. And I'll work hard to capture grants, associate that money here in New Hampshire and get it to appropriate places. Standard Power has captured well over $2 million in grants from the New Hampshire PUC. Geothermal is usually a heating application. It's rarely an energy, electricity generator. There is possibilities that it could be used as such in, in places where there's a large difference between the surface temperature and lower strata. But at this time, it's not an application for electricity that's used in the New England states. I'm a geothermal person. My house is built into a hill. I have an earth burn passive solar. I think it's a shame that all houses aren't built like that. That one way, oh, sorry, sir, I didn't see you. You almost saw me trip. I was getting wrapped up in this cord.
Forgive me, I have a head cold and I'm very hard here in the moment.
Oh, boy.
I want to save the planet, so I will 100% renewable. Unfortunately, my electricity is coming through the same power line as my neighbor who finds the cheapest, dirtiest electricity he can get. Now, how does that actually work? Or have you already explained that?
Multiple times, you didn't hear. But one more time, the greenness is embodied in the renewable energy certificate and will retire renewable, renewable energy certificates on your behalf or on your community's behalf and the sum total of other folks like you who want to be 100%, 50% or who even join the Swansea standard. Yes, sir, from the front.
Could we just say that by buying at the higher rate for 100% green, you're putting money in to make more renewable energy?
Absolutely. Absolutely, that's what the program does.
So I'm burning the same dirty electricity here?
What?
I'm burning the same dirty electricity as my neighbor.
Everybody gets the same electrons. There's no difference in who, what electrons you get. They're the same soup, the same soup. Goes everywhere. I think that's all the questions? Is that all the questions?
Right.
Oh, sir. Great. Swansea name is on a, a certificate. Yeah, so the Conval High School.
We could keep it down a little bit so people can hear. Thank you.
Anyway, we've captured grants for local projects on a regular basis. Anytime we have a, a grant availability and a project sequence happening similar times, that three or four month window where you can apply, we, we fill them up as much as we can. We like to have four or five grant applications in all the time. So for instance, if the project goes in down there on Route 10, we would want to have a grant in available for it. We've secured grants that have helped rebuild local hydras that were stumped or turned off or broken by the utilities in the 80s and brought them back to life. And we'll continue to do so. Bye, Bob.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks for coming. Thank you.
All right, so thanks for the great, wait, 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 wait. Thanks for the great showing, everybody. Thank you coming, for coming out. Thank you for your great questions and good luck with all of this. We, we're doing a great job for you and we look forward to serving everybody and helping everybody that needs help. So don't, don't hesitate in being in touch with us. Thank you to your select board. Thank you to your town leadership. And thank you to the committee.
Seconding that motion to adjourn there, sir?
Second.
Aye.
Aye.